We're gonna call this meeting to order. It is six oh two. Roll call, please.
Doreen Klaus.
Here.
Dustin Elder.
Here.
Kristi McGeehee.
Here.
Bobby White.
Here.
Jamie Conway.
Here.
Okay, um, we have approval of the agenda as presented. I did let you guys know that Mr. Stanton will not be here under guest speaker.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, Doreen has made the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Bobby has seconded that. All those in favor? Four zero. Moving on, approval of the minutes for March twenty seventh.
I make a motion we approve the minutes for March twenty seventh.
Okay, Dustin has made the motion that we approve the minutes for March twenty seventh. Do I have a second?
Second.
Kristi has seconded that. All those in favor? Four zero. Moving on, guest speaker Ellie. Ellie was here for a, uh, public hearing, uh, placing a double wide on land at nine oh two North Main Street. Counsel, what's your thoughts?
I approve.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Doreen has made the motion to approve her placing that double wide there at nine oh two North Main Street.
Second.
Dustin and Kristi both seconded very enthusiastically. Um, all those in favor? Four zero. Welcome to the neighborhood. And, and, yeah, and you're welcome to, to leave if you need to. Thank you, dear. All right. Old business. Bills to pay and balances on hand.
Why do we pay twenty-three hundred dollars to the cemetery?
Well, I got, I was just getting ready to say it. I got a circle right there.
Keith Gwen. Twenty-three hundred cemetery.
That's great.
It's what?
Great.
How many? For twenty-three?
There should be a report.
He will invoice us sporadically every once in a while, so.
Oh, okay.
Five or six hundred dollars depending on the time of day and if it's Sunday or whatever.
Okay.
I've noticed that we haven't gotten reports from the cemetery recently. Is that? Am I missing those?
They, they haven't had a lot of information, but I may have an email today.
Okay.
I'll double check.
Almost, almost regular is, uh, the funeral pays the city and then the city pays the, uh, key. So it's, it's, uh, not out of pocket, I guess, is what I'm saying.
And we do, what is it, a hundred?
A hundred per, yeah.
Hey, Chief Murphy, is that, is this, is that normal amounts for the volunteer guys on a monthly basis?
That is three a month.
Oh, it's a, it's a, it's quarterly. So I was like, I'm coming down and becoming a volunteer partner.
Do it.
Do it. Don't tempt me.
Don't do it for the, don't do it for the money.
What's the, uh, four hundred for the virtual academy?
That's the police department online training that they do for their continuing education.
Okay.
They can do it online as opposed to going to.
Is that just a one-time charge or are you monthly?
Yearly.
Yearly, okay. I make a motion to approve the bills to pay and balances on hand.
Second.
Uh, Doreen has made the motion to approve the, um, balances on hand and bills to pay. Dustin has seconded that. All those in favor? Four zero. All right, moving on, uh, department head reports. Got a lot of good comments on the new playground equipment.
Did we get them up?
Not yet. Not yet.
It's number five.
It's on the agenda.
Noticed lots of abatement hearings going on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I see a big change in, uh, patrol presence. Now that you're full up and I was very, I grinned from ear to ear when I saw that. That weekend after, uh, Chief Williams said that they were full up, I was in town a lot on the weekend. And his guys were all over town. And I was texting him, I was going, "No complaints," I said. I said, "Those, those guys are everywhere."
They've been working hard.
That is a high intake on strays this month. Twenty-four? Wow.
I believe she had a, two, two different bags of cookies, so that kind of shot it up there.
Yeah.
That'll do it.
I read an article about Neo Show where they got rid of their officer that takes in animals and they're no longer do animal calls.
And.
Do you, do you know, like, I know this is not, not our business, but are they gonna take that money and invest it in, like, spaying and neutering or, uh, education or something? Because it's not gonna go away.
I, I don't see how they can keep it like that. It's going to bubble over for a long.
I would think so. I, I would like to see more cities partnering up with some doctors and just start getting more animals fixed somehow. It's, it's really an issue.
Every animal we take in is spayed and neutered.
Yep. That one that I'm fostering, she, she had it spayed, or, well, neutered and brought it back, you know, so, yeah.
So, hey, Chief Murphy, so you had a busy month?
Average.
Average? So what's the, what are the trainings?
Uh, I have new guys on there. Like, we do SCBA training, in-house training.
Just, just on the, just on the equipment and stuff?
Yes.
Victor, are we online yet?
Yes.
Okay. That's what we, Dustin and I were talking about that earlier. That's awesome.
So, so the new ones fired up?
Yep.
No problems?
Yeah. Had issues, but working through.
How many alarms went off? Yeah.
I have a question on Lance's runs. There's, I mean, it's double what anybody else's. Is he, is he pulling off jobs here in town to go to fires when they're, like, in the middle of a, a water leak or something like that?
You mean like Lance?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
He don't get paid during the day.
Yeah.
He runs ninety-nine percent of getting calls.
Well, I was just watching, looking at what we have and it's showing he had eighty-five runs compared to the next person was forty-two, I think, and that was Tanet.
Which we're only allowed so many to go on mad calls. And everyone had his mad call.
So.
And he always jumps on.
What vehicle is he using? What vehicle is he using?
The rescue.
Is he coming to the, the fire department and taking the vehicle?
Okay.
He doesn't, like, he don't, on the job, wouldn't, like, go all day, so he has to pull.
Okay.
He does run, uh, like, Jim, they run during the day, Monday through Friday. I got yellow marked, I have to show them where they went. They do not get paid.
For the record, if I'm having a heart attack, I don't care if you're doing a water leak, come help me.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, Ken.
Yeah. No, we need our, we need our first responders, that's for sure, and that's not a problem. I just noticed it was, I mean, several days in a row in batches where he was running and.
There's that thing in Bobby does a lot of it's to the same address. We have a lot of those, uh, repeat customers. Repeat customers. I don't know if it's, this could be a kitchen, somebody invisible. We, but, yeah, a lot.
Okay, thank you.
And that actually goes, I say a quarter length at Christmas, we always back half. So that's three weeks that he's saved.
Okay.
Okay.
That elevates it quite a bit from there, too.
Yes.
So that, is that spreadsheet that you gave us this time showing what each one of them did? Is that, is that a new sheet or? Cause I don't, I don't remember ever seeing, uh, the breakdown like that of, you know, district, district runs versus, versus Grammy runs for each person.
Yeah, she created a spreadsheet.
I mean, it's cool. I, I'm.
I like it.
Yeah.
It's one of those runs for all the guys. I, yeah, I really, I appreciate it.
To get a new laptop, also, like, a new spreadsheet.
I like.
And you understand the needs, right?
Yeah, Grammy or East Newton.
East Newton Grammy?
Yeah.
It took me a while, but I figured it out. I mean, I was like, trying to figure it out.
Any other questions for the department heads?
I have one.
What's aging?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just throw this out there. I bet putting that playground equipment up was a bugger.
It was.
Well, no one, Peter won.
You, you save the city a lot of money by doing that.
All right, hey, Lana, I may be showing my ignorance here, but what does aging mean on the summary report?
Sorry, I already put my reports away. I apologize. The summary reports for Grammy?
Yeah.
Is that what you're looking at? That's a new report. We've not submitted to the council previously, but I had our utility billing start, start printing that off when she does utility billing monthly. This is a list of how many accounts we've filled and the total overall that we've filled.
Yeah, cause I, I noticed, I mean, I like the thing that said how many accounts that we have and then, and the differences and stuff, but, uh, what does aging mean? What's the total aging one, total aging two? What does that mean?
Um, so the total aging two would be any that we have eleven accounts that are past due. In that current cycle. Does that make sense?
Say it one more time.
So the total aging one is current.
Okay.
So like in zero to thirty days.
Okay.
And then the total aging two.
All right, so there's not a whole bunch that are overdue?
No, because of the shut-off policy of the city, um, we typically don't have several that are past due because of the shut-off policy.
And, and after the bill situation, I watched the ladies, they called every one of them that had not paid or have not came out of their accounts and let them all know it. So they worked really hard through that.
I, I like that one, by the way. Can we keep that one in there?
Make a motion to approve department head reports.
Doreen has made the motion to approve the department head reports.
I'll second.
Bobby has seconded that. All those in favor? Four zero. Moving into number three, which is a closed session, uh, addressing personnel matters. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to go into closed session in accordance with RSMO six one zero point zero two one, three personnel matters.
Okay, Doreen has made the motion to go into closed session in accordance with RSMO six one zero point zero two one, three personnel matters. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dustin has seconded that. Roll call, please. Doreen Klaus.
Yes.
Dustin Elder.
Yes.
Kristi McGeehee.
Yes.
Bobby White.
Yes.
Okay, we're going into closed session at six seventeen.
Anyway, Wendy had a complaint scared me. Jean, have you noticed there, all that gold are hauling off of Raccoon Road?
Do what now?
I said they're hauling that gold off of Raccoon Road.
Yeah.
And litter book been running all day. Pretty romantic at my house.
Do what?
It's pretty romantic at my house.
Uh, yeah. I'm glad that, uh, maybe they'll, maybe they'll get it over with and done with, I don't know, you don't have to worry about it. So I'm helping.
Good.
I don't understand there, I don't understand how they were able to obtain the clearance for locating that because there was a boat that had done canvassing the neighbors.
Yeah.
I don't understand.
Oops, somebody. I think Barry and him still, I think McGill and them are still fighting inside.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I hope so. The audience is much still fighting.
I like the bad loader too, having over there on that hay field that Barry's got, I gotta go ask him.
Yeah, I gotta get a hold of the audience and see if we can't get our cattle separated. We enjoy, share a pasture all the time.
Sheriff, you're the head, isn't it?
What's that?
You were more on the receiving end of the sheriff.
Yeah, I was, let's say, benevolent. That's all right. They had that store there on, on the, on Colorado.
No, I don't know that. That's, uh, Bobby Hughes, that are we, that name's that. Bobby Hughes. He got the corner and then the old white building, that's the guy that does that synagogue. Bobby bought that corner. Jean, just so you could put up a solar sign. He bought for, to have a place to put a sign on.
So Mr. Brooks and his wife left. Yeah? Maybe he should scoot around there. Just say, he's gonna be screwed in. It's not over yet. So, I did not staple, I was gonna staple, like, the department heads all the pages together. But when Kristi came in to get hers.
What'd they get?
They, what did they steal? He had a, uh, bank sixty inch hill that's small. And put it back in the block so he'd feel bad.
That was handy. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, probably took it back to Walmart and got money for it. They probably took it back and got, returned it as broken or something, got money.
I don't think they took the mountain bracket.
Now, do you have some people that were working the other day?
What's that?
Was there some people that were working here the other day?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Barnyard or something.
Okay. With the bunch that runs up and down that road?
I think, yeah, for sure. Put some speed boats in that road.
There's as many on the end of that as there is sixty highway.
I don't know. Yeah, I'll be parked up there bottom of the wall, the gate, and then there comes this car off the hill, you can see. He's coming at such a speed that he kind of glides a little bit before he touches the back end. Yeah, I think your dad and I tried to buy that piece around the horse from Joe. So Joe, Joe was really the culprit.
Yeah.
In our situation with the bad. He didn't want, he didn't want to sell it to.
Well, you know, dad always said he got more.
Do what?
Dad said that Joe Young could get more five-eighth or eight-eighths, maybe eight or nine-eighths or anything.
Yeah. You also seen some of the, uh, destructions that he come up with.
I heard there's still some dead people that's fighting each other or sort of filed it down, cause they were leaving, sir. But you know, his deal was, he'd sell it to, pay the same cent, sold it place to ten. All night, ten grand, he'd pay for a well and set it. Did you leave that paper? Then he'd make things look like, yeah, well, ten grand, I do it there. I make things on the well and set it. But you know, it's like them two wells and drill over there. That never passed in yet.
See, you didn't see doors on your containers there.
Either the characters are trying to make a roof on the top of those or, or whatever.
But I think he was, was that, I think he was aware of this. Maybe, no, that's one thing, that's playful for him. And I remember, I remember my girlfriend, we used to work at this, uh, eighty, this is Jim, right? We're not, we, we're back from, we can, we come back, think that, and he showed us, and he was, um, said he had acquired the property sound hours, one, oh, it would be all right. He would do some tree treeing maybe, or use some hard drive or something like that, that's, well. Yeah, yeah, well, he used the one. He was very congenial with the concrete. But he was a lot. He has a long time, that is all, all that.
Well, I wondered, then he got, you got to park in front of that, and you got your car over there. You're, you're squared up. You're squared up. So I think you know, we had, uh, forty, forty bucks or whatever. You're working. You got the red, you got the.
I think he squared it up. I see the money, I see. Something like that, a lot of good cameras, and then the hardest camera, we used it for bill. Yeah. Sales, stuff like that. Like you said, we've got a lot of camera always in there. That, yeah, we've got a lot of, and we're, they're all in there. We're all in there, we're in town, we're in big, we're literally playing that game. So that, that, another cold, eighty. When I was growing up up there, dad rented that from, uh, I think the name was George Dinkin. And, uh, dad's, uh, three yard field, in fact, there's woods, and there's still leavens of the dentage after, but, uh, we rented that.
You know, when Roberting had that off our circle there, for a, for a three year. I don't think he was supposed in there, but he started up for a jet drop with water and then it went over all gene and over here. And then over the trees, but, and then he took a piece of solid wood off the bar and wrapped it around the bar and threw it over the pot, it was, it was seventy thousand. Yeah, 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 we got it, we smoked right there. He was, he was, but, but, so Steve was quite nice on that in my house. There were, there were bastards. I like that, um, form, two voices, and the other one, Jean, I like, Mary did, uh, wanna make that, I guess, one of the names, like, Joe Daniel, oh, Daniel, or sister, Gloria. But then, I was back, I'm on that table, I believe that's fifty, I think Gloria was her son. You been down there pretty much?
Yeah.
That was, you always find that, uh, the Jenny's place. Well, he, he found it's right, the Jenny's place, but, now, up that bend, um, there's a, we're ready, and then, then, last week, we did walk around. I thought they'd be ready for us there. I always find them, like, different on top of the hill.
It did, the family showing where the, the, for.
And, yeah, we talked, I remember, we were talking the other day about how we had that hill today, but, you know, you still have, yeah, we make, uh, lots here, and then we want to, we're all.
Well, I knew Tom, the boat, we backed you there. You remember that? Well, the whole, the whole, we'll be there, we got to do it out here. Never mind. Half hour foot, bring it in, it's a little.
Do what you want to do.
That's true.
But I'm taking you home for the foot short, I was on a road with April, I broke my ankle, it's really late, we got stuck in that puddle, he had a lot of traction, we broke your leg. So, he wants to get traction with a truck.
But you may, I'm not sure one day you do something, but, I don't know what was, I hear she went around the whole, she came in, or what she lived. She tried to go through it, then she was, uh, uh, I think it was tractor, I think it was, uh, around, or back, yeah.
If you wanted to, if you wanted to hit it, it was, uh, we just go up there, and I'll let you, you have to go down.
In, well, we, that was the story. There's something, I don't, I was talking, I talked to the gal, we're talking about, he's, we're grateful, and I know this, we're, we're grateful. It's an area where there's an extraordinary mountain. That's where the trees grow, they come down.
I think several tons of white rock, there's now, there's, there's several tons of rock. Ain't there all the rock in there?
I didn't.
Six hundred, six hundred was gone.
Yeah.
When did, what year did you try to refer from the system?
I'm only saying seventy-six or seventy, yeah, seventy-six.
I couldn't, I couldn't remember that. I didn't get it. But then everybody, so you're.
I don't know where you got the problem.
Yeah. You got, you got to do that.
Yeah, that was the only, uh, line. I think it was forty, uh, long, I mean, uh, and you know, Caroline, yeah, I don't know where you got the, yeah, the, yeah.
All the way to the book area in Far if you want to book.
I'm sure.
How did you develop that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So many, maybe six or seven little shotguns, I got like a couple of them size. Yeah, I got another, they had over fifty, sixty, seventy thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's wild.
Ninety thousand dollars.
And I didn't buy one. They, they had, I saw them, but they were English made, they were signed. And, uh, they were twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-four dollars. They would actually build the shotgun to you as part of your property. So that when you buy it, it was there. I would actually modify it, something like that.
Very neat.
Yeah.
And one of their sixty-five thousand, they put down thirty thousand. It was like, wow, that's amazing.
And they probably, somewhere somebody would have bought one like that, you know?
Mm, yeah. Probably twelve, fifteen dollars, yeah.
Yeah. We, uh, over a month. What, what, you come, I'll say, uh. Probably guys. Oh, how much is ten, I don't know. I think it's all about. It's kind of the same, we had on the right. But, uh, the year before, when you're in hospital.
And, uh, both sides.
For six or eighteen, and then individual.
Where's that at?
Well, it's, it's over my, it's a, it's an organization that provides Christian chant for teenagers. And, uh, they will, they will hold, uh, their sporting play two, once a year. And they go down there individually, and I think it's fifty dollars or forty-five dollars.
The Johnny Bean, Johnny Bean?
No, it's the, uh, around the island, it's a short name.
Oh, okay, this is on, uh. Yeah, well, yeah.
You, you go there.
Off the U or off the U highway or down Sixth?
No, it's all, one of the tents, it's over the island.
Yeah, yeah.
Sky Ranch, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. U, U highway on our side, turn ten on.
I think, I think their sign is, uh, Sky Ranch. You go down there, and then you'll see a road to go to south, that curve, and gather them up. And you drive down the way to the town. I went down there, uh, for, 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 we had an assembly one time.
He said it will stain clothes and kids.
Yeah, seems like it might be even hotter, too.
Yeah, but the blue is uh four hundred and some dollars a ton. Or what they call the sacks, we need uh we need five of them. It's twenty-five fifty-four and six fifty delivered, but we've got a trailer we can go to Fayetteville and get for six hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, so um will that cover all the area that we need to cover at the park, at the ballpark?
Yeah, that's twenty foot, the boys measured it twenty by forty. And uh I had ordered some six inch pipe to put around it and the gentleman with the mulch said you're better off to use ten inch because they won't kick it out.
Okay.
So I've got ten inch pipe ordering. For whatever mulch we decide to use, it makes sense to put it to keep it from getting kicked out. But with the wood mulch, see we put, I don't know how many tons of wood mulch are on the playground with it. And it, we ran it anywhere down here.
Well, that's where I'm going with next, can while we're getting this, can we get it for the that playground as well?
I mean, we could, yeah.
We don't have money for it?
Yeah, I don't think we have the money for it at this time.
Is there still ARPA funds available? Cause there were park approvals for that.
There are, we need to talk about ARPA soon.
Okay.
And I think that is something we could spend those remaining funds for.
Okay.
Cause that was originally an obligation.
Yep.
But that's what.
So go get the mulch, right?
I do. Do we got a motion there?
No, it's not.
As long as they say this will last, you will go through that much sand and mulch in half.
Yeah, thanks for checking on that, I appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, you don't necessarily need to mention that the price is not that high, so.
I'll I'll call them and get them to come down here.
The kids are dying to get on that equipment.
There, yeah. When will the type be here for that?
It probably next week.
Okay. Cause we already got games going out there and the kids are asking to play and there was one guy was like, I was gonna let mine get on there, but then I didn't want to watch everybody else's kids climb up there too and be responsible. So we've been keeping them off as far as we know.
As we can try.
As quick as we get it, we'll get it in there.
Perfect, thank you.
Does that does that complete our ballpark area now? I mean, we've got the new dugouts, the fencing, the all of that.
Yeah.
Anything else, the ballparks?
The only other thing I'd like to try to find volunteers to do it was some volunteer metal is either off of our container down there, I want to bring a little lean tube to the tractor. And then we can put a fence around it to secure it.
Jared said the lean tube would be the best, rather than splitting it.
Yeah, that's what I I got to look at and decided.
Yeah, and he would help, he said, if we got the metal.
I know where you can find metal. It's on a building down here. Two years, guys. Alright, uh moving on, ordinance nine four five, annual sewer increase. Did you guys have questions for uh Mr. Spears on um the sewer prices? Uh remember i- at the beginning when every year uh we have to revisit rates, you guys passed and postponed uh the sewer rates so that you could uh make sure that it's in compliance with the new sewer upgrades and the bond needs. So I think they've decided that, let's see, where is it? This, why does this have all these bases here? Give me one second. Base rate for one thirty-four, it was it's like a five percent increase, is that what it is? Yeah, five percent or six percent or seven is our choices, yeah.
Those are for comparison and then I went this way so we can write in.
Okay. Okay.
So do we meet in the middle and just do six percent?
Holy crap.
She did add in that um our current base rate is thirty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. Um for comparison to a local town, which would be Monette, their base rate is thirty-four fifty-two, just FYI. So if you did five percent, it would make your base rate thirty-four forty-six, six percent makes it thirty-four seventy-nine, and seven percent makes it thirty-five eleven.
So that that's Monette's base rate for sewer, but are they paying uh all the five dollar increases on their water too? I mean, what's their base rate for water? I I so that's 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 the that's what I'm getting at, we're we're dingin' a lot right now. Five percent or five or six percent.
I think our water was already below, is that, what's, I mean, I don't I don't know the base rate of those, I didn't look them up, so.
Twenty, the base rate on water is twenty-eight sixty-six right now, plus the the water improvement fee, which is at twenty.
Oh, we're at twenty. That would be forty-eight sixty-six is our base on our water. I don't know what theirs are, but. What's what is the necessary amount? Like what at what what point do you have to be at, uh Mr. Spears? We're talking about the sewer rates.
Okay.
And we have a list here and it's talking about the percentage increases. Do you want to see what I'm looking at? I can hand it to you if you'd like. This is what we're looking at and these are our percentages that are.
Okay, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me back up just a second.
Okay.
Let's let's not focus on percentage increase.
Okay.
Uh let me, do you have a copy of the letter that I gave?
I I might have it in my uh email here. You emailed it, right? The you emailed it, it was emailed, oh, to Lana? Just made a review. Now that's the. Magic completions. Yeah, I don't I don't have it.
Cause we need to be at the rate of that two percent median household income.
MHI, we had to get that two percent MHI.
So wherever that point is, we need where we need to be.
Basically, you'll need to, of course, generate enough revenue to take care of the operation, maintenance, and replacement, okay? What I did was took an estimate of the operating expenses at three hundred and forty-six thousand annually. You also uh will need to acquire revenue for a bond payment. And I think the first one is fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars. You also are required by the bond covenant to generate a bond reserve fund in the amount of forty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. Plus a repair fund in the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars.
I think we've achieved all of those.
That's good. Now.
Let me look and make sure, I'm I'm pretty positive.
I think what you did was we take funds on hand and.
Jean, can you wait a second? Let me, I don't want one out here to hear this, so I want to know what we've done and what we haven't.
So our reserve, our reserve for our sewer bond.
Alright, Lana, he was saying, can you read those numbers again?
Uh I used I used three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for uh maintenance, repair, and replacement of the treatment plant, the operating expenses. And then fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-one bond payment. And then forty-one thousand five hundred and ninety bond reserve fund and eighteen thousand six hundred and ninety-six repair fund totaling that.
So what I'm, at that point right here, what I'm looking at is I got twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and four uh for sewer depreciation and replacement, so that covers that replacement, the depreciation part. The bond reserves, what I'm looking at here is seventeen thousand one hundred eighty-three and twenty-two thousand seventeen and twenty-two, twenty-two and seventeen, seven, eight, nine.
See, this is.
I don't see any.
City's fully funded funding a bond payment reserve fund for money on hand.
Which is the eighty thousand, right?
Uh I think that was what.
Which is that right there. So we have we have accomplished those.
The bond reserves.
Right, so we have all of that, yes. So we 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 do have that.
But anyway, what I came up with in this derivation was uh needing a total of over sixty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars a year. Uh seventy-five percent of that would come from the base rate and then I think brought about seven point one six percent increase. And that increased the cost per thousand gallons, the construction rate, at uh seven point one six percent. And that meant that the water per thousand gallons would be at uh three dollars and seventy-four cents rather than currently two dollars and forty-nine cents. And it would need a person using five thousand gallons of water uh. If his average was five thousand, he would pay two dollars and thirteen cents as opposed to forty-six dollars and seventy-eight under the current rate. That was one that I came up with.
Victor, when we talk about that MHI, does it go back with it when this project started or does the MHI have to meet what it is now? Because it's there's a huge difference.
It's the minimum, we can't charge below that, is the way I understand it.
Well, but what I'm saying is our MHI has shifted. After COVID, the MHI shifted drastically.
Yes.
To a higher MHI. So is, do we have to?
I don't know.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, okay. I'd be making it up if I said.
Well, I'm I'm thinking that the MHI on the water itself was about thirty-two, but that that would mean that this would not, that we're already there at that rate. But if we're not able to pay our bonds, then that wouldn't be good.
Yeah.
That doesn't make sense.
I just know that USDA sets that as a min- minimum standard as as far as rate.
I think it's for eligibility for them to.
For grants.
And to buy your lawn, you have to have at least two percent of the median household.
Right, yeah, we do. And that's the, there was a big discussion on the difference in when we started these projects and where we are now because there is a huge shift. And it's so strange, I don't know why the MHI went up so much, but somehow it did.
Make more money.
Yeah, and it knocked us out of, you know, we talk about increasing minimum wage and all that, it knocked us out of eligibility criterias. So when they're wage raising these minimum wages and stuff, they're not raising those criterias. And that's what, it's it's very unbalanced. It's very frustrating.
But it's best to set your rate at what your expenses are, not just some number that is the minimum.
Yeah, looking at your operating costs, for sure.
Okay, so I I'm gonna assume that that you did a sanity check on on these numbers then?
You're gonna assume what?
That you did a sanity check on these numbers, that and do we agree that we need to raise?
I absolutely agree. That was actually one of the conversations I had with Jean initially, I reached out to him, I was concerned about. The money for wastewater treatment and with the new improvements that they hope that the fund is gonna take. We're able to save some money because we have money in reserve, but just for day-to-day operation. Our rates are not worthy, not at this time. And it's unfortunate, but we can't not take care of one fund because another fund is so costly.
I do want to ask a couple of questions. Victor, this new increase that we put, or or Mr. Spears, you put in a new large plant. And how many more people is that supposed to to help?
Be able to serve?
Mm-hmm.
I have a design capacity for two thousand two hundred people. Hundred thousand or a hundred gallons per capita per day. The plant has an original design capacity of two hundred and twenty thousand gallons a day, that's what you operate here.
So approximately, how many additional households is that?
Additional households? Well. I I don't know how to compute the additional.
It would depend on the number of people in the house.
What's your, uh, two point five, two point seven persons per household. What I was doing here was to show how much money that you would need to accrue each year to meet the obligations of bond payment, bond reserve, and repair fund.
Well, my.
It changed, if someone was to use, if his if his average in the three-month period was five thousand gallons of water, metered water consumption, his his rate would be, the sewer bill will be fifty dollars and thirteen cents as compared to forty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents now. So if you subtract the two, you can see that's five, three, three dollars and fifty-three cents or something like that increase over what we'd be paying now.
So three dollar increase?
Yeah, three and a half, three, three dollars.
Now, my my point being is is this is why it was really important to make sure that your town doesn't go stagnant when these houses don't sit empty. Because the more people that pay into these things, they can help cover those bonds. That's that's what I was getting at, is you've got a lot of houses coming in, we're tearing down old ones that have been vacant and empty.
And we're not even running at half capacity. We're, you know, we've got plenty of room capacity-wise to add on houses or industry.
Yeah. It was, she shut that one there.
You're running one hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons an day average, seven hundred and thirty thousand where the design capacity is two hundred and twenty. So you have, you're only running at fifty, fifty-five percent hydraulic capacity now and organic, it's even less than that.
Well, I made a statement about a year ago and and one of the citizens got a little irritated with me because I said every empty house is a strain on your system. Well, that doesn't make sense because it's not using the system. Well, if it's sitting there empty, it's not paying into the system. So if you only have this many people paying into a system and you've got to fix it this big, the more people that pay into it, the better off you are. That's why you end up having to raise rates because you have a smaller amount of people paying for it. You you get what I'm saying? That's that's why.
But there at times, what we have to work on is the data that's been accumulated so far. And from what I gathered, uh you were issuing nine thousand nine hundred bills each year. Uh if that goes up, that's good. Uh you you gain more revenue as people come in and use the system, but things are as they are. And we only have enough people to facilitate nine thousand nine hundred bills a year.
Yeah.
Problems that we had there at the wastewater plant, it got us into a little hot water, but EPA was uh a hydraulic deficiency, I'll put it that way. But we have the detention basin now to correct that. And that's where most of the money was coming into, or most of the money that was spent was on the detention basin. But basically, what I had been here was to come up with one procedure, one one scenario of determining what kind of rate you'd have to have opposed to what you have now in order to come up with the money that you need.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, that's uh, like I said, five thousand gallons, I don't know what the average usage is. Water usage uh during the three-month period that you utilize. Do you all understand how the sewer bill is generated?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I thought it was something less than three dollars, fifth cents, three dollars, fourth cent increase on five thousand gallons. That would be that would be the rate you generate sufficient money. If you find out over a year's time that you're generating more money than you actually need, you can always cut it back.
Or not increase it the next year.
Not do an increase, yeah.
If the thing of it is, you don't want to get into a situation where you don't have the funds to meet the obligations that the rural development is going to ask for you adhere to.
Yes, yes. And and your mentioning of that five dollars, you could freeze that if you ever needed to because your MHI doesn't have to hit until the end. Just remember, we're gonna talk about those bonds in a little bit, and we're gonna have on that, but that's that's an option too.
So it this, this is the, it's the sewer rates that the council hasn't increased in three years, right? Okay, so just for the record, for anybody listening on YouTube, um if we vote to increase rates e- even at six percent, then just let it be known that the council has not raised rates for the last three years, the two percent every year that they normally would. So the six percent will just simply be making up for that.
With that, with that rate, also, I use a five percent increase in operating expense. An estimate allows uh saying, you know, this is, we're gonna assume that our operating expense might go up by.
Okay, so the the recommendation is is seven percent, is that what you're saying? Seven point one or whatever? But but that does it all have to be at once or or can it be, you know, so much this year and then and then add a percent next year or?
You, as I am saying, you can do it however you wish to handle it, set your pace, you can set for a three-month period and then gradually move it. However you all wish to come up with the means to gain the revenue. Normally, it's done, you know, once a year or something like that.
What do you guys think?
Has to be done.
Yeah, and and so in my opinion, if we're gonna do six, we might as well do seven and rip the Band-Aid off. And that's, the 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 amount of difference is not in in six and seven. But the other thing we could do is just do six now and then add a percent to the annual increase next year. And that would add it to.
I say just rip the Band-Aid off. And as you said, we haven't, we haven't increased it for the past three years, so.
It hasn't been increased for three years.
Yeah, when you when you mentioned ripping, that 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 is a four cent difference.
Yes.
It's not a huge, on that, on that one, it's not.
Yeah.
So we, so we need to read the.
Seven, seven.
Thirty-five, eleven. Eleven cents. Thirty-five, eleven, first one thousand.
And like you said, for the YouTube, we pay those as well. Every person that's sitting on this bench makes those same payments.
Our parents pay it, our grandparents pay it.
I pay two of them, I'm not thrilled.
I borrow a wall, something you should be interested in. This is a sheet out of a ledger generated by the Missouri Public Utilities Alliance.
I have that.
You've probably seen.
I've downloaded it before.
And this, people of municipalities of similar size, they'll be above yours and they'll be below.
Oh, here's, you asked me about the water, here's the water, um.
Got water and got.
We don't, oh, we don't have Monette on this.
You what?
I don't see Monette.
Cause they don't figure out.
Figure of theirs.
Yeah.
See, this goes up for five thousand people.
So compared to us, we'll compare Goodman, Goodman is a town. Um our, let's see, our wa- our monthly water bill is twenty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents, Goodman's is fifty-one seventy-five, that's water.
You're gonna see them all over the place.
Yeah. But he was out, he was asking about water a while ago. Are we comparable? Is there water? Our water is the lowest on this entire sheet out of all of these towns.
Without the twenty dollars?
These are base rates, we're looking at at base rates. And let me see what the, hold on.
Forty-eight sixty-six. Annual water bill, monthly water bill, monthly.
If you.
This is based on five thousand gallons of water.
If you add it on, Bobby, if you add that twenty dollars on, we're still below one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen of the cities on this, and all of them.
Keep it at fourteen. Excuse me.
So we're in the. Our population is actually higher than most populations on there too, that's interesting.
Twenty-one something, yeah. They they.
Somebody pulled the picture, right?
It's a population of three thousand something down to twenty-four hundred, which is quite a range of population that they grew these days. Uh is the city a member of the Missouri Public Utility Alliance?
I don't think so, never.
We're the s- the company is is an associate member, but I don't know what the dues are, but they have some real good information available. And they even work out some means for financing, give you some leads, it's a it's a good organization. But that's, that's where I got this data.
Are you guys good for them to read the ordinance?
Yes.
Oops, whenever you are ready.
Bill number nine forty-five, ordinance to amend section seven two zero four zero four zero, the current seat, chapter seventy-one. Sewer users charged of municipal code, the city free. Be able to hang by the board of aldermen of the city free as follows. Section one and section C is hereby repealed in its entirety and a new section C is hereby enacted in its place, please follow. Section seven two zero four zero four zero, user charge rates. See, the minimum charge per month for the collection and treatment of sewage shall be thirty-five dollars and eleven cents for the first one thousand gallons for residential contributors and thirty-five dollars and eleven cents for the first one thousand gallons for non-residential contributors. In addition, each contributor shall pay a charge rate of two dollars and twenty-nine cents per one thousand gallons of water or wastewater above the minimum as determined in the preceding section. New sewer charge will be in effect beginning May twenty twenty-five, bill is valid. This ordinance shall take effect in the April fourth of after its state of passage, as determined by the board of aldermen of the city.
Quick question, that that chart you have on that second page says three dollars and seventy-three cents per one hundred, the difference of two twenty-nine.
Oh, I apologize, did I? I just saw the.
I thought I was reading it right, but I just, I.
Do you want me to reread that?
You you guys.
Just the C part.
The minimum charge per month. The minimum charge per month for the collection and treatment of sewage shall be thirty-five dollars and eleven cents for the first one thousand gallons for residential contributors and thirty-five dollars and eleven cents for the first one thousand gallons for non-residential contributors. In addition, each contributor shall pay a charge rate of three dollars and seventy-three cents per one thousand gallons of water or wastewater above the minimum as determined in the preceding section. This sewer charge will be effective beginning May twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you.
This is the first reading. I move to accept bill number nine forty-five on the first reading, suspend the rules and place bill number nine forty-five on the second and final reading by title and number only.
Second. Dustin has made that motion, uh, Doreen has seconded it, roll call please.
Dorian Claus?
Yes.
Dustin Elder?
Yes.
Kristi McAdie?
Yes.
Bobby White?
Yes.
Bill number nine forty-five, the ordinance to amend section seven-two zero point zero four zero, paragraph C, chapter seventy twenty, sewer users charged of municipal code of the city freezing.
I move to accept bill number nine four five on the second and final reading by number and title only.
I'll second. Doreen has made that motion, Bobby has seconded that, roll call please.
Dorian Claus?
Yes.
Dustin Elder?
Yes.
Kristi McAdie?
Yes.
Bobby White?
Yes. Bill number nine four five passes. Okay, change order number four wastewater treatment plant, so we have a change order in front of us. Um, McClanahan is wanting to move, uh, from the original contract price of four million four hundred thirty thousand with an increase of a hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and six dollars. And increase contract times from the four hundred and eighty days to five hundred and, nope, six hundred and sixty days? Questions for Mr.?
What day are we on now?
Do I?
What day are we on now?
Oh, it was October of twenty twenty-three, so. Do you know what day we're on?
When you say what?
Um, the increase of times, I'll tell you how this went when we were negotiating.
And as I say right now, by count, the, uh, the last change order number three, increase to sixty days, and that changed the completion date, I believe it was, if my count is correct, March seventeenth. We do not have everything completed at this point because of equipment shipment delays. The generator for the lift station is not supposed to be here until June twenty-second. Cody Green with Rural Development thought that we might all have another change order to provide an extension of the contract time, so I added another sixty days.
I, I do want to interject that every time we extend this out, we are, we are pushing away from CBDG grants. We, we were ineligible to get an additional CBDG grant because this one continues to remain open. I don't, are you aware of that?
No.
Yes.
Why would, why would they want to curtail your opportunity?
Because, because this one has been open for so long, um, we're not eligible again until, what, twenty twenty-six because of this?
And we haven't extended the funds until this project is done.
Yeah, so every time they're extending it, because, because in the very beginning, when I sat down and negotiated with McClanahan, a- and I'm not trying to be a jerk, but, um, I, I wanted to start the timeline when we sat down in September, and I said, why don't we start it right now? And he said, I need to, I need time to get in product, right? And I said, well, if you start it right now, we can just get the ball rolling. And he says, how about we, if we start it right now, I'm going to file a contingency anyways and extend this. So, you may as well give me the grace period in the beginning, and so I said, okay. This was when we first sat down, you guys recall that? Yeah, when we first sat down, and he was like, I'm going to extend it anyways whether you start now or, um, if, so let me start later. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
My recall on the start date was because of the B A V A A regulation, and that was supposed to be supplied, and we were waiting for.
We were waiting on the approval for that, once we got the approval, we sat down in September. And in September, or it was, it was either August or September, he wanted his start date to be set for October, because we d- we started digging in October. And I, I, I was like, let's set the start date and get going right now. And, and he was like, well, you go ahead and set it for me right now, I'm just going to file a contingency in the end. And so, I'm not understanding why we continue to file contingencies if, if we gave him that in the beginning.
The notice proceed, if I remember this correctly.
Correct.
Sent him to start at August twenty-third. So, his, his rushing time started at August twenty-third.
Mm-hmm. Because he wouldn't sign it right then when we sat down, we pushed it back thirty days because he was, he wanted to order product before he started.
Well, what I recall was that we were not able, we took bids, I guess it was in January, but we were not able to accept a bid.
Correct.
Until after the B A A.
After they signed the waiver for us, the which was sitting on a desk in.
And he held, and he held his price. And then we finally accepted his contract price, and then wrote a notice proceed, and the starting date was August, I believe, twenty-third, was four hundred and eighty thousand.
Four hundred and eighty days.
Four hundred and eighty, uh, four hundred and eighty days of time.
We sat down in August, I think, and, and we made the decision to have his proceed date a month out from that moment we signed a contract. So, it, it, it's neither here nor there, I'm just saying, we just keep extending it, and it's, and it's affecting us negatively.
I did not intend to call for another extension of time, but this was at the request that Rural Development, I think they want it a little closer to the regulations.
Well, maybe you could go back to them and tell them about the grant thing. Maybe you could go back to them and tell them about the grant thing.
I wasn't aware of that predicament that you.
Because, because if they're, if they're hurting us by their extensions, then that's a problem.
Because we, yeah, we can't, we can't apply for another one, that, we cannot apply for a community block grant for that, because of that. And Sue Bakor knows this, I talked to Sue. Yeah.
That's information I'm glad to hear about, but that was where. But the point of the matter is, is that we are all plagued with this, for some reason, we cannot get electrical equipment or valves or other items, there's a long delay. The generator is not supposed to be in here until June twenty-second. And, uh, in order to keep the contract viable, I think Rural Development wants the completion date extended.
So, basically, you're looking for a vote on whether they're, um, okay with, uh, changing the contract price and extending those contract times?
Well, the contract price is not changed. All we're doing is.
So, no, no money?
The other thing that he wants to understand in the change order is that we would reduce the retaining from ten percent down to five percent. That is a term of condition, a condition of contract.
They did increase it the first time.
Right, okay, so this is not, we've got three on here too then, instead of, why is none? Okay. This change order, I'm trying to figure out why it was added on there. So, the extension of ninety days. Started contractor's application for payment number twelve.
So, what, what's the alternative if we don't approve this, what, what, what happens then? That's my question.
Well, he'll go ahead and finish his contract. He'll finish his contract, it's just that it's, when you say what's the alternative, uh,
What was our, what was our agreement in the beginning when, when we said four hundred and eighty days? What, what is, why, why do you set a four hundred and eighty days? Is there not any contingencies that says if this, if this overruns past this?
Well, I mean, we're at, we're at, we're at a hundred and eighty days over now, right?
I set four hundred and eighty days originally because I was concerned about what we're dealing with now, getting delivery of equipment. Uh, normally, uh, see, he's, he's, he's worked, what, a year on three hundred and sixty-five days, a little longer, actually worked, and, and developed. But I was the one that set the four hundred and eighty because I didn't think that we'd be able to complete it within the year time.
Correct.
On May thirty-first, we'll be at five hundred and eighty-six days.
Right, so, I mean, we're, we're at a hundred and eighty some odd day, a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety days over your four hundred and eighty days.
Well, we're, we're, we're a hundred and.
But by the ti- when, when this, when this?
We're a hundred and eighty days beyond, uh, four hundred and eighty.
Right.
I can't remember on the contract if there's a contingency, if they're overrunning it.
That's a pretty good chunk. I'm just wondering why we're voting, if it doesn't matter anyway, so, so there's no alternative, what's the alternative? That's what I'm asking, if we don't say yes, what, what does it mean if we say no? What happens?
I think your question would be rather addressed to Rural Development concerning what they change order. It's just to keep the contract, I don't want to say the wording of the contract, you know, the.
It looks to me like they're retaining five percent, like they're not paying, they're holding back five percent, not paying them, right?
You're, right now, we're holding back ten percent. That's a condition of the contract out there, if you hold back ten percent until such time as that he is sufficiently complete with the work that we can reduce it down to five percent.
Well, I say a hundred and eighty days over is not sufficient.
Well.
Lana?
I just, how much better if I mean, that part of this change order is the expenditure of the remaining grant monies?
This is true.
And so, the additional request for time is for us to spend some grant monies and obtain some additional equipment with the grant monies.
So, that makes sense because, because our project ran below what we thought it was going to be, there was grant money left, so that's why. I was sitting here thinking, why is he just now ordering a generator when he's known he's needed it all this time? He's like, I was getting irritated. Okay, that makes sense.
And until we got to the end, and we're trying to get quite a bit of lab equipment, pumps that are turned out and over.
All right, guys, so, why didn't we lead with that? Why did we not lead with that?
Well, I.
It wasn't asked, why go through that whole deal when you could have told us that we need it for us?
I, I knew, I knew we had money to spend, but I, I didn't know that the generator, we've been grilling you, um, it's, I, I would entertain a motion.
I thought that's what was on the change order in case for us.
Not exa- I mean, we have. Yes, thanks Lana, well, I, I, I thought that was going, never mind. I, he said generator, and I was like, I thought we already had the giant generator, why did we wait to order a second one? What's the, you know, I was getting irritated. Well, there's some confusion there, and I want to apologize. But we are getting held up on CBDG, just so you know. But that's, that's because the proj- the project's been out there for ungodly amounts of time beyond what this contractor's doing. So, I would entertain a motion on this change order for the ninety days additional.
I move that we, I move that we approve change order number four for an additional ninety days to McClanahan Construction Company.
Okay, Bobby's made the motion to go ahead and accept this change order number four. About a second.
I second.
Dustin has reluctantly seconded, all those in favor? Four zero, thanks Jean, it's been interesting. I hope you have a good evening, sir.
I have to go to the bathroom.
You're going to have to raise your hand and ask out.
I apologize, I do, like, I, when he said generator, I thought it was one of those original, I mean, I'm like, why would you not order that ahead of time? Are you serious?
You know, simply, sir, trying to get experience for something.
Hey, I, I would entertain a motion for a small recess, recess.
Make a motion, we take a recess?
I was being sarcastic.
I second that?
I second it. Uh, Doreen said, uh, a motion for a small recess, Bobby seconded that, all those in favor? Uh, four zero, small recess at, uh, four, uh, seven forty-seven, for the small bladder mayor.
Small bladder mayor. No more water for you.
Sure you want this seat?
I just think it's a while. I just need a vacation.
Lana's over there. Well, we're, I mean, we already got denied the, the CBDG, dragging out ninety more days is not a huge deal, but I'm a little frustrated about the CBDG thing because, man, I just, why'd they gotta do that? You know, if you need money, you need money, so, and if it's available, they, they should be, I just, I don't know. I was really upset when I found out about that, honestly. Bye, bye.
Hey, that was today.
Different seats, white stars under your nails, is that it?
Yeah, he went all the way home.
I'm not coming back, you can't swear me in.
You know, they kept adding on stuff onto this agenda, and I'm like, guys, seriously?
Yes.
It's all business, we gotta take care of this.
Throw it in there right now.
This is my last night, Jean. This is my last night. Dust, Dust. You'll miss me, won't you, Jean? You'll miss.
I think that was a no.
I said, you'll miss me.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it stinks like this.
You know, I've, I've learned so much, I, I, uh, I've enjoyed it, it's been hard some days and better others, but honestly, I wouldn't trade my experience here for anything. I've really enjoyed it, yes.
If there was a funness of this nonsense.
Don't do it, it's a trap.
Thank you, can I post this on Facebook?
I don't know why.
Your detour, do I have to mark on it?
Sorry. I just came to, yeah.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, so I.
Do you hear that Lana?
And I found Monette, and I, and it was, it was.
Right.
Missouri Public Utilities.
Are you guys interested in going back into open session?
Yeah.
I, I need a motion.
Oh, I'll make a motion to go back into open session.
Second, Kristi's made the motion to go back into open session, Bobby has seconded that, all those in favor? Oh, no, roll call please, sorry, my bad.
Um, Dorian Claus?
Yes.
Dustin Elder?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we're going back into open session at seven fifty. All right, we are moving on to uniform expenses.
But this is just a review quickly, Doreen had asked our last council meeting how much we used to spend on uniforms compared to how much we spend now. I used two prior years since this year, we've had a lot of grant lines to equip the uniforms, so it wasn't really a great number. Um, when we were still using, uh, UniFirst and had that contract, we were spending nine thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars overall. Now, that includes everything, that's police uniforms, wastewater, utilities, everything. But, our overall total for the year twenty-two, twenty-three was nine thousand one hundred and forty-nine. The following year after we dropped that contract, it was three thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
So, six thousand.
So, it's, it's saved us tremendously, we buy the guys jeans, we buy them boots, we buy them shirts, jackets. But it has saved the city tremendously.
That's quite a savings.
Mm-hmm. And, you know, that was just an FYI, because someone had asked.
Yep. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, moving on to number nine, update regarding drinking water system, each one of you guys have a, a little statement in front of you. Lana's going to give us the rundown. It should have been on the desk.
This one?
No.
Oh.
It was laying on the desk.
Water stuff. Wastewater stuff.
Right. Is that under your folder?
No, I put it with the wastewater stuff.
There you go. Sorry, she's, uh, because it is, it is a nerve-wracking thing when, um, when we sat down and found out that, that we weren't gonna be able to use that three million point two, three point two million dollar bond, um, we had to make sure that everything was gonna fit into this nicely. So, what Lana's done is she's got us an update, so if you want to go ahead and explain it all, that'd be great.
So, for the wastewater treatment plant to date, we've expended seven hundred and fifty thousand CBDG money and two point six million in RD loan dollars. We've expended nine hundred and seventy-three thousand RD grant dollars and have a balance of approximately two hundred and fifty thousand, ten forty thousand, grant monies left.
Yeah.
Um, and that, that's what we're trying to expend right now because they are grant monies. The drinking water system, the projected cost is nine point eight million. Two point five million of that is gonna be subsidized, also known as grant monies. So, I... Pending some unforeseen expenses when we did this out, when it goes out for bid, um, there should be one to cover all of it. And that, that could...
Okay, this, but, okay, okay, sorry. The, so, eleven, is it eleven exactly that we started with?
Yes.
That's the bond.
So, the bond was eleven. And then, coming off of the bond, though, is only the two point six.
Yes.
So, what's, what's left then, is left to cut? So, so we have a number, the, the, the nine point eight, or is that an old number? Because I, I thought that they were doing the, the engineering, the money for the engineering grant was for them to come back with a number for us.
This is the number that she gave me today.
Oh.
This is the number today, that's their projected amount according to their engineering report. And she said that's projected, but we still have to send it out for bid. We've just submitted the notice for public meeting, and that has to be posted for thirty days. Then we put it out for bid, and that's sixty days from April twenty-fourth. I, I apologize, we have to do construction from next month, and then it's sixty days from April twenty-fourth. And then, we notice up for bid, and that has to be a thirty-day notice. So, we're looking at June before we know any back number.
So, basically shovels in the fall. That's exactly what I said. Yeah, I, I know, I told you, I told you guys, don't hold your breath on spring, gonna be fall.
Right, I didn't say which way.
It's gonna be fall.
So, we had the two point five, um, grant monies allotted today, that doesn't mean we won't proceed with the grant monies, but today, this is...
It's a tight squeeze, y- you have close to a million-dollar play in there, but that's, and that's, that's pushing it, so. But that, that, and that is why we went ahead and put in that five-dollar upgrade over this, this several months. You gotta make sure your funding's there, and, and if you can pay for it, you should pay for it, you should do that.
Patrick's going to be here next week, and then we, we're running a check next week, we should be able to finalize the design.
Good. Good. It's a little, little less than a million-dollar difference there.
That's good.
Scary, but good.
Well, scary, but, I mean, it's good. I mean, I was, I was expecting, I was hopeful, well, I was hopeful.
Trust, trust me, we, we cussed and discussed over and over again, we even had, we had Jean come in with the wastewater, we had the engineers, I mean, we set everybody that we knew down to make sure that this was gonna make it in that eleven million dollars. That's, it was a, it was, we, we did our homework on that, right, Jean?
Right on.
Right on. Any other questions on the, uh, drinking water system? Is this a set date too, Lana?
I'm sorry?
Uh, this May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, three o'clock at City Hall, is that a set? Okay, so that's gonna be a public meeting to discuss, uh, the water system again. So, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, three o'clock.
And she wanted to be sure that we knew that it was not a public hearing, but a public meeting.
Public meeting.
They say it was a public meeting.
Is that before our meeting?
Um...
Says three o'clock.
Oh.
Let me go check.
Yeah, I was gonna say, on this paper, it says three o'clock.
May twenty-second is one of our regular council meetings, so yeah.
But it's at three?
It doesn't require the board, it's just a question and answer type thing, I'm in for a new leader, but it doesn't require, um, a consensus by the board.
They're a wealth of knowledge, too, anytime I've had questions, they've answered them, so, really. Any other questions on the update of the water system? Yeah. Okay, this is the exciting part. Canvas the April eighth election results.
This is an election summary report, community county authority, April eighth, twenty twenty-five, summary for city of Grandy, Alderman East Board, city of Grandy, Alderman West Board, city of Grandy Mayor, official results, eighth day of April twenty twenty-five, the county of Grandy, city of Grandy, Alderman East Board, Bobby Brooks, sixty-five, March off thirty-sixth. Alderman, no vote. We can vote to approve the canvass results.
Uh, I move to accept bill number...
No, 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 just the results.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just need a motion to approve the canvass.
Christie. I just need, I would like to make a motion to approve the canvass results of the election.
Okay, Christie has made the motion to approve the canvass, um, canvass the results of the April eighth election. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Bobby has seconded that, I've never had to do this before, do we need a rule call, or can I just do a regular vote? Okay, that's, that's what I thought. All those in favor? Four zero. Okay, now we're gonna move on to the bill. Oh, wait.
I'm swearing in.
Why do we have it in different order?
Oh, I apologize, where am I?
Okay.
I jumped on the gun.
That's all right. I, I thought, yeah.
Do you hear, we've got to compare.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
Right here.
Do I need to stand?
Yes.
You're doing it together.
You have to stay up there. I, Dorian Clowes?
I, Dorian Clowes.
We solemnly swear.
We solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications for the office of Alderman.
That I possess all the qualifications for Ald- but...
For Alderman.
For Alderman.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Missouri.
And of the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of the state affecting cities of this class.
Be he...
Oh, yeah, I'm doing that.
Cheater.
The provisions of all the laws of the state affecting cities of this class.
And the ordinances of the city of Grandy, Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Grandy, Missouri.
And faithfully demean myself in office.
And faithfully demean myself in office.
So help me God.
So, we got it.
Dustin will be your next.
Get on down there.
I, Dustin Elder, do solemnly swear.
I, Dustin Elder, do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications for the office of mayor.
That I possess all the qualifications for the office of mayor.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Missouri.
And of the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of the state affecting cities of this class.
The provision, the provisions of all laws of the state affecting cities of this class.
And the ordinances of the city of Grandy, Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Grandy, Missouri.
And faithfully demean myself in office.
And faithfully demean myself in office.
So help me God.
So, help me God.
Mr. Brooks? I want to tell you, Mr. Brooks, having faxed him his department emails, he prays.
Cheater.
I've got it, or not, but we're gonna be...
Brooke will go. I, Bobby Brooks.
I, Bobby Brooks.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications for the office of Alderman.
I possess all the qualifications.
For the office of Alderman.
For the office of Alderman.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Look out on Hancy.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
Provisions of all laws.
The provisions of all laws.
Of the state affecting...
Of the state affecting...
Cities of this class.
Cities of this class.
And the ordinances of the city of Grandy, Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Grandy, Missouri.
And faithfully demean myself in office.
And faithfully demean myself in office.
So help me God.
So, help me God.
Yeah, don't look for him. I can't help you.
You ready?
Yep.
General number nine fifty, the ordinances of the city of Grandy, Missouri regarding the results of the general election held in the city of Grandy, county of Missouri on the eighth day of April twenty twenty-five. Be it ordained by the Lord Alderman of the city of Grandy, Missouri, followed to with section one, whereas the Lord of Alderman of the city of Grandy, Missouri, did call for an election to be held on the eighth day of April twenty twenty-five. For the purposes submitted to the qualified voters, the election of Eastwood Alderman to your term, Westwood Alderman to your term, Mayor to your term. Whereas, as provided by the election laws of this state, the general election was held on the second day of April twenty twenty-five, uh, the eighth day of April twenty twenty-five. And whereas the results of said election have been certified by the county clerk to the Lord of Alderman, and whereas the county clerk had examined the election returns of said general election and the certification of election results made by the county clerk shows the following results to bid. For the office of Eastwood Alderman to your term, Bobby Brooks. For the office of Westwood Alderman to your term, Dorian Clowes. For the office of Mayor to your term, Dustin Helbert. Section two, we, the Lord of Alderman, do hereby certify that according to the ballot cast at said general election, the following were elected to represent the offices to win. For the office of Eastwood Alderman to your term, Bobby Brooks. For the office of Westwood Alderman to your term, Dorian Clowes. For the office of Mayor to your term, Dustin Helbert. Section three, this woman is shopping full force and a second one after it's passed and approved.
I move to accept bill number nine fifty on the first reading, suspend the rules, and place bill number five fifty on the second and final reading by title and number only.
Second. That's all I have to do, a second? Second.
Um, Dorian Clowes?
Yes.
Bobby Brooks?
Yes.
Kristi McGehee?
Yes.
Bobby White?
Yes.
Christie.
Second.
I move to accept bill number nine fifty on the second and final reading by number and title only.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry. Dorian Clowes?
Yes.
Bobby Brooks?
Yes.
Kristi McGehee?
Yes.
Bobby White?
Yes.
A bunch of amateurs.
Bill number nine fifty, the ordinances of the state of Grandy, Missouri regarding the results of the general election held in the city of Grandy, county of Missouri on the eighth day of April twenty twenty-five.
Uh, approve removal and addition of new signers on checking accounts.
Um, I need, uh, my motion to remove Jamie Conway and add Dustin Elder to all city checking accounts.
Second?
I'll make a motion to remove Jamie Conway and add Dustin Elder to all city checking accounts.
Second?
Okay, I have a, I have a motion to remove Jamie Conway and install Dustin Elder on all checking accounts for the city, um, and I second it, or is...
First.
First was Christie, seconded by Doreen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay. Jim?
On the, the generator bill, it's part of the purchase of new gas meter for the two generators, the, the telephone company, and they, they got two generators around one meter. And, and order the, the gas meter got, doesn't handle the pressure, so we're losing some gas due to pressure compensation. So, for the four thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents, it's a new rotary meter, which will be more accurate and, or really kind of gonna mediate some of our gas loss that we have. And we're losing, we're losing some there that's unbilled gas, so... Just add permission to purchase a meter, gas meter, and that's the meter and all the materials to, uh, install that engine installation.
It, it does cover installation?
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
And this gas meter, be able to handle the volume?
Yes, it handles it, because the, uh, the tech with the company, he got all the information on both generators sized it, and, and for all their daily loads and...
Eh, I, I'm just, you, you said it's because the telephone company's running two generators down there, I mean, do, are we on the hook to provide a meter big enough for everybody that decides they wanna suck that much?
Well, it's to our advantage.
Yes, we're losing gas.
Yeah. We've had to do it for the factory, and I, I put it on the chicken house and stuff like that, so, the big issues.
Okay. That we're losing it, this meter won't read the volume of gas that's flowing through it, and this new one will.
Yeah, there's a chart that, I mean, we can go with what we got and change the regulator to a different, somewhat cheaper meter, but every month, one of the girls here at City Hall will have to go into this mathematical equation to show the cost of the, the difference in everything. And this way, it's a straight read and it's...
And those larger, um, gas lines, they pay a hundred and fifty-dollar meter fee for them, so, they, they can affect pay for the new unit themselves.
Okay, that's, that's kinda what I was getting, eh, what, what are, what are they paying to get the bigger meters, is what I was wondering, so, that's good. Okay, um, we have to have a motion for that. Okay, entertain a motion to, uh, to buy the new gas meter?
I move that we provide the new generator.
Yeah, yeah.
A gas meter, sorry, gas meter for the, guess the telephone company? GTC?
Well, it, it'll be ours, but that's what we're...
Okay. Not to exceed, oh, sorry, not to exceed four thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Christie, or, uh, Bobby, Bobby made the motion, Christie seconds, all those in favor? Motion passes, four zero.
If I could, I got another purchase request, I guess, for our factory. It wasn't gonna be dinner, if I didn't get the, I didn't get my... If I didn't get the, I didn't get my price until, like, take the debt.
Well, I guess we'll hear it in two weeks. Go ahead.
Two hoses for the back truck, there's a back hoses, and they're, uh, one of them is six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents, and one of them is nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety cents, and it's a two hundred dollar shipment. So, total of eighteen hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifteen cents. There's a big six inch hoses that, that helps to create the vacuum without, they've got holes in them.
What department pays for that?
Do I?
What department pays for that?
Um, we can do-
Parks.
Gas or sewer, it can be, and screen even, because we use it on board.
We used it at the park.
Yeah.
Gun horns, yep. Get holes with it, clean bathrooms.
I make a motion that we allow them to purchase the hoses, not to exceed eighteen thousand, eighteen, eighteen hundred and fifty-four, uh, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifteen cents.
Second.
Okay, Doreen's made a motion that we allow, uh, Jim to purchase the two hoses for the back truck, not to exceed one thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifteen cents, and Christie has seconded, all those in favor? Uh, motion passes, four to zero.
Public comments.
Is there anybody signed up for public comments? She's like, I got something to say now. Okay, we'd have nobody signed up for public comments, I'd entertain a motion to-
I make a motion, we dismiss. Second.
Okay, Doreen's made a motion for, that we dismiss, and Christie has seconded, all those in favor? Okay, we are dismissed at eight, four-